We go Renee calling.
Yes, good. Yeah, sorry, I didn't know.
Um, okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting. It's Monday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five to order. We'll start with twelve call. John.
John Lamout here.
Scott Winters.
Margot Clinton.
Suzanne Johansson.
Nathan Nelson.
Aaron Ludden.
Is Bob attending online? Do we know? No, he's just absent. Okay. All right. Next is the visitor's section, and this is for visitors that are wanting to comment on things that are not specific to today's agenda item. So if you would like to speak about something not about today's agenda item, you can go ahead and come on up. And then when I'm having some technical issues, so if someone could let me know if someone's online, if you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand.
We have no attendees online right now.
Fantastic. Okay, all right. Next, we'll go ahead into the Legislative Public Hearing. This is for PL Text two thousand and twenty five dash oh one two eight. A Legislative Public Hearing on text amendments to the Bend Development Code to facilitate housing options. And Pauline, we will turn it on over to you.
Great. Thank you, Chair Gomby. Good morning. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Pauline Hardy. I'm with the Community and Economic Development Department, Senior Planner, and a couple new faces here, so I just wanted to introduce myself. You'll see me mostly when there's code updates, and that's just kind of my role with the city. And then with me, I have Rachel Baker with the Housing Division, and she is gonna tag team with me, so I'm gonna open up, go over some background on the proposed amendments, and she'll dive into the details a little bit on the different options that we're discussing tonight for housing alternatives. And then once she's done, we'll go over the council goals, and then I'll dive into the details of the actual amendments. So for background, um, this is almost one of two years um in in the works for developing these potential uh housing options. It started back in June of two thousand and twenty three, and the city held a workshop and invited people to the public workshop um with the purpose of identifying barriers to housing production. And during that meeting, there was um several recommendations, two of which are presented in the package of code amendments tonight. One is to consider allowing more than one accessory dwelling unit on a property, and one is to allow a second kitchen in a dwelling unit. Our code today prohibits that second kitchen, so this was definitely a point of discussion during their uh workshop. And then in October, there was an email that we received from Ryan Starr that uh was presented to the City Council, and it uh proposed an option to allow detached townhomes, which took me a bit to wrap my head around. Because they are, um, as you see in our proposed draft, we're calling them row houses, so they'll be similar to townhomes, but they are truly a single family, de- single unit detached dwelling. And then I will go into more detail on those. Between October and November, staff researched the different options, and then we held a work session with City Council in November of um last year. And they uh again, just went over the different concepts. They were supportive of them, and so they directed staff to put together a package of amendments um for Planning Commission City Council consideration. The draft code uh we did between November and March, we already did a lot of vetting before that, so we were well prepared to draft the code. In March, we sent a draft to the Bend Development Code Update Group, which is a large um list of people who are either developer, developers, architects, land use chairs, uh, people who are just generally interested in the code updates to let them know that this package is coming. Between March and April, when the package was posted, there was some slight changes between the draft that went out to the Bend Development Code Update Group and what is in your package tonight, but the concepts are all the same. There's just some slight differences. Um, so I'll let Rachel talk about the different options, and then um we'll go from next.
Uh, good evening. Again, Rachel Baker. I am the Housing Division Manager for the City of Bend, and I'm so pleased to be in front of you tonight on these topics. Um, we really enjoy the opportunity to bring forth innovative housing solutions. And I say housing solutions that can create housing despite market fluctuations. Because often an ADU or an accessory kitchen is something that not necessarily a developer will um bring forth, but often a homeowner who might want to create something on their property for their family or create something for the community. And those could start off as like that intent, but in the long run, they really provide more housing units to the city event, which is what we need. So that's why I'm excited about this. Um, I will briefly share kind of the background that um Pauline kind of went over with how these came about to be in um front of us today, and then also um Pauline will take us on a deeper dive into the code changes themselves a little later. Oops. I'm moving mine, but. That slide, yeah, that would be great. So um Pauline mentioned that workshop that we held June twentieth in two thousand and twenty three, and there were all kinds of stakeholders at that workshop, including um employers and lot and infill um property owners who are looking for solutions, um architects, home loan officers, representatives from Central Oregon Builders Association, representatives from the um Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and um a local building official was there, so there's all kinds of discussion about what was possible, what wasn't possible, what could be vetted and what couldn't be vetted, and it was just a great opportunity for um the community to get together and and talk about housing solutions. Two of the requested um kind of solutions that Pauline will walk us through the code on were more ADUs on lots and accessory spaces with kitchens. Again, this can offer the opportunity for more intergenerational living or caretaker living and create greater workforce housing in our community. And then in addition, a long term kind of increases to our housing units. That slide. Uh. We also received an email from a um developer in the community, and the EMBs, I believe, group were um part of that effort. And so we looked at row house development, and could that be done? What are the pros and cons? Um, how a townhome could be also constructed independently? And um these are just another housing choice that our community could also utilize, because without greater housing choices, um, people have get stuck, stuck in maybe a house that doesn't suit them anymore, or can't move up into a house that will suit them from where they are at. And so we want a greater opportunity on that housing spectrum, and housing choices will give us greater opportunity on the housing spectrum. And then I will let Pauline take it from here.
Thanks, Rachel. So uh the the three amendments um summarized again is allowing a second kitchen, allowing um up to two ADUs on a lot or parcel with a single um dwelling unit, and then row houses, which is a new um uh housing option. These three uh types of housing alternatives definitely implement the City Council goals. And I'll highlight the two. Uh, we have a two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty five City Council goal with a strategy to optimize housing continuum, and then the action is to explore code or policy options to increase affordable and middle income housing, which these amendments um definitely support. And then council recently adopted their uh next set of goals for two thousand and twenty five through two thousand and twenty seven. And that's a housing goal to develop and implement strategies to meet community housing needs, reduce homelessness, and create walkable neighborhoods through data-driven policies, reliable funding, and innovative development codes. And I would say the row houses is definitely an innovative development code amendment. Uh, the strategy is to accelerate complete neighborhoods, and the action is for more more affordable homeownership and rental opportunities that recognize the diversity of housing types and sizes needed to support a growing and changing community. And that action, um, the the three amendments, more homeownership opportunities through the row house development, and then more rental opportunities through the second ADUs, and then the second kitchen allows that different um intergenerational living opportunity as well. So the proposed amendments, again, second kitchen, allowing a second accessory dwelling unit and new row houses. And then there's some minor amendments to chapter three point eight, which I'll go over at the very end. So for the second kitchen, um, it's pretty basic. Basically, if they're going to um propose doing a second kitchen in their dwelling unit, it has to be located in a portion of the dwelling unit. Um, only if it's internal access between the kitchen and the main dwelling unit's livable space is maintained. So there's always access between the primary dwelling unit and the room that has the kitchen. The second kitchen cannot be an accessory detached structure. Um, it has to be, again, in the main dwelling unit, and it has to comply with the current building code requirements. And just uh, we, number four is basically to ensure that people aren't putting in accessory kitchens and basically turning them into illegal accessory dwelling units. So they will be responsible for um signing and recording a compliance covenant to make sure that they understand that they're not creating additional dwelling units by putting in the second kitchen. It's just simply a second kitchen um that goes along with their existing primary dwelling unit. So for ADUs, I want to highlight, um, so I started in two thousand and fifteen, and over the years, we've been doing a lot of work to um support the development of accessory dwelling units in the community. Uh, starting in two thousand and sixteen, they used to require a conditional use permit, which was additional cost, neighborhood notice. And is, I mean, it's just a dwelling unit in a neighborhood. So we eliminated the conditional use permit. And then at the time, they were limited to only six hundred square feet. And we worked it out so that if your lot was a little bit bigger, um, I think it was six thousand square feet or larger, then you can have an eight, up to eight hundred square feet. But if your lot was six thousand square feet or smaller, then you were limited to a smaller um accessory dwelling unit of six hundred square feet. And so we eliminated that, or we proposed that so that there's different options for sizes for accessory dwelling units. And as you can see, you know, just those changes significantly increased the number of ADUs that were built um over that time period. And then in two thousand and eighteen, we removed the requirement for sidewalks um to be developed with accessory dwelling units. And then uh new sewer and water system development charges exemptions were created. And then in two thousand and nineteen, and in compliance with uh state law, the parking requirements for accessory dwelling units was removed. Uh, they could still put in parking, but it's just not a requirement. And then in two thousand and twenty one, we got rid of the the six hundred square foot minimums or maximums, depending on lot size, and just said all ADUs can be eight hundred square feet, regardless of how big your lot is. And then, so that was in two thousand and twenty one. So it's been a couple of years now that we've done um new amendments for accessory dwelling units like we are tonight. So the proposed amendments will allow up to two accessory dwelling units on the site. Uh, if you have one ADU on site, it can be attached detached. We don't care. If you have two ADUs, one does have to be attached to the primary dwelling unit, and one um can be detached. And then the two floor areas is eight hundred, which is our normal um accessory dwelling unit maximum size limit today. And then five hundred square feet. So if you have two on site, one's a little bit smaller, one's a little bit bigger. And then to make sure that they're not exceeding our capacities for sewer, uh, if the second ADU exceeds a maximum density in a um in a zone, then um it would not be permitted if the sanitary sewer main capacity uh meets certain thresholds. And um with this, uh, if they again exceed that maximum density, so let's take the low-density residential district, which allows up to four units per acre. If they exceed that, then they would just have to submit a sewer analysis demonstrating that there's capacity for the um second ADU on site. And then the row house development, um, again, by definition being proposed, it will be uh defined as a single unit detached dwelling. So this is not a considered a middle housing type. It will not be um allowed to go through like the middle housing land division applications. It's because they are detached, so they truly are a single um unit detached dwelling. They will be allowed in the low-density, standard, and medium-density residential zones. Reason for not allowing them in the high-density residential zone is because we don't allow single unit detached dwelling units in our high density. It's really geared towards much denser projects. And then the minimum side setback will be zero feet, this minimum, so they don't have to do zero. But they can do zero when they're structurally independent, and then they have to comply with the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. And we have um some Brad um here from our building department. If you have any specific questions about building, um, he can help with that. And then the maximum lot sizes, because um these are single unit detached dwellings, once they hit these maximum lot sizes, then they would just develop under the regular single um detached dwelling requirements. So then your setbacks are five feet. Um, really, it's all it does, and it bumps up your lot size. But any of these below uh this this maximum size, and they can develop as row houses if they want, or they could still do townhouse developments. It's just another um tool on the toolbox for developing pieces of property. When they do decide to move forward with the row house development, all the other standards for townhomes would apply, so like driveway approaches and um some design standards. But they just don't have to be attached. And then these are just very minor changes, but I'll just highlight them. Um, chapter three point eight is our development alternatives chapter, and it includes all these new options that we've been working on over the years, like row houses will reside in three point eight, and also includes um zero lot line and micro units and um shared courts, a whole bunch of different options. And we just started cleaning up. So at the very top of this chapter, it just identifies the review process if you do decide to move forward with any of them. And then the, one of our development alternatives is a small dwelling unit development. And this is a, it allows um these type of developments on very small lots, and it can be a a dwelling unit with an ADU or even a duplex. And so we're just clarifying because we're proposing now to a lot more than one ADU, but on these very small lots, then they'd still be just restricted to the one um accessory dwelling unit. And then a couple other sections in the development alternatives chapter for mid-blocks, T-quarts, are two different cottage uh developments and share courts. Uh, we're just cleaning up the timing of when it, when they have to record their CCNRs um for common area maintenance. Just need a little cleanup there. So um the Planning Commission tonight has the public hearing and make a recommendation to City Council. There is the City Council's public hearing, a little ways out. It'll be on June fourth. And then the second reading would be June eighteenth, and then the amendments of August's plan would be in effect mid-June, mid-July, July eighteenth. So I can answer any questions that you may have. Again, Brad's here. If you have questions about the building code.
Question.
Yep, go for it.
So the second kitchen is now opening up so that you can have it in your house, but not having it separated into an ADU.
Correct.
You still can do the that ADU though in the house.
Yep.
And if you did decide to, you know, go by floor, open up or do a garage or cut it in half, you can get up to eight hundred in the house.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, one can be attached, one can be detached. If you end up doing two, we don't care which one's the five hundred square feet or which one's the eight hundreds, just that, those are the two maximum sizes that are allowed.
Really adding another option. We're not taking the closed off option. Okay. And then um uh, well, wait for the other ones if anybody else has a question.
Where do these small lots exist now? Or are we talking about like taking a fifty by a hundred foot lot and dividing it in half?
They can't, just like similar if they want to create townhome lots. Um, they could be infill lots if they already exist that small. More so probably in our medium-density residential zone, but then there's, you know, some infill uh sites still available that you can create smaller lots out of.
Okay.
And then the question on the the row houses, so you get zero lot line, which we also have that in o- other places, but you then have to five feet on one side for a side yard, correct?
Not um for the row houses. So, oh, so row houses are minimum um zero on both sides. But once that uh lot abuts a uh piece of property that is not part of the regular land, the land division that created it for the row houses, let's say there's already an existing single-family home there or um a duplex, that side yard setback would be five. You follow.
So then, eh, okay, so there could be two feet or three feet in between each unit?
Correct.
Or zero.
Or zero, yeah, but I was thinking on the other side. Yeah, wow. And we can get construction and all that going in there. I've seen some tights. I can see, I've seen some tight see, things in in more urban areas, but it's usually a five-foot walk to get between to get to a yard or to put a scaffold or something.
Yeah, you um, there's gonna be a higher fire rating for that for us to the. So it's just gonna be a higher fire rating if you, and you're gonna have that access front and back if you, I think if you get less than three feet.
Yeah, trying to think of the construction guy squeezing in between the.
Yeah, it'd be difficult, but I mean, they do it, I guess, in com- commercial construction too.
And then if it's a zero on one side and someone says, well, I will do a five foot, then it's gonna be less fire concern, less building code concern if they have five feet to maneuver.
Yeah, it's three, well, it's three feet is the minimum to have unrated instruction.
Gotcha.
So if you, if you get over any amount over that in housing, in houses out of the ORSC, then it's um unrated. You can have doors and windows and everything.
And my last one is the row house. I get the concept, and it's very clear what we've done. Uh, but is this similar to the cottages that became very popular in the last couple of ten years where you could put the green in the middle, put the houses up to it and park in the back? Uh, we have cottage requirements too. Isn't it the same thing?
No, because cottages are, um, they have quite a bit of restrictions on their sizes that they can be, and their open space requirements.
Gotcha.
If a the row houses not necessarily could take advantage of the open space in the middle, but we do have a de- a development alternative called share courts, which we do have quite a few applications in for. That is townhomes, but they don't have to front a street, like cottages don't have to front a street. They can be all centered around some open space requirements. So they would just go through a shared court development alternative.
Gotcha.
Also cottages are, can be developed on one single parcel.
Mm-hmm.
First, a row house, my understanding from this is that it's each one's on its own legal tax result.
Well, that, yeah, that's my next question. So it'd be a common area maintenance, common area parcel versus cut each piece seven.
It's just like a townhome where you would.
Yeah.
I mean, they could set up, I'm sure, CCNRs that they wanted to have a shared maintenance of all outdoor space, which townhomes or attached dwellings often do.
But row houses do have to front a street.
Yeah, oh, they do.
Yeah, they can be alley loaded, but they do have to have street frontage, whereas the shared court is the one that allows um some open space, and the the shared court actually acts as the um street frontage.
Um, I I have a couple of questions. Um, just for clarifying, I don't know why I thought about this, but reading the definition for accessory dwelling unit, ADUs are only allowed on lots that have a single family on it. They're not, for some reason, I didn't know if you could put one, like, say there was a duplex on a lot and someone wanted to build an ADU, you can't do that.
That's a triplex.
That, okay, goes to triplex. Yep, there's an ADU.
Yep, and when we say single unit dwelling as a primary use, that also includes like manufacturing and prefab dwelling units as well.
Um.
And townhomes.
Hold on, if that duplex, if if one of the units in that duplex was small enough to be counted, considered an ADU, you could add an ADU.
I was just thinking, because I know there's like a lot of duplexes, and I think a part of town prior to when you could do uh the middle housing where they're on a single lot, and I was just wondering, and it ha- I know duplexes back in the day, they had to be a common owner. And I just didn't know if someone was a common owner, they wanted to build an ADU, but it sounds like they would just have to submit for a conversion to a triplex if they wanted to add more.
I mean, they could do uh convert, I guess, back to a house and then two ADUs. The benefit of staying a duplex or triplex is they can eventually do a middle housing land division in the future. ADUs don't count towards. Um, they don't qualify, just like the row houses do not qualify for middle housing.
Okay, um, and then why, just out of curiosity, why does one of the units need to be attached? One of the ADUs?
Uh, we were just looking at best practices from other cities, and most of them, like where um even Renee came from in San Barbara, they call them junior ADUs. And so the junior would actually have to be attached, so they were more specific on the small one had to be the one attached. Um, and maybe you can give the background on that?
Oh, sure. Well, just in general, eh, during our internal meetings on this, we were trying to balance adding another unit on a property, which is a great benefit, but also um acknowledging that these are supposed to be accessory to the primary use of a single unit dwelling on the property, and so trying to develop ways to minimize impacts if they're truly going to be accessory to the primary unit. So starting with this as a starting point, that one of them needs to be attached, and as Pauline said, doesn't matter which, there's maximum unit size for um the two ADUs, but we're not distinguishing which one's attached or not.
And with that comes the addition of no uh SEC charges for water and sewer. So there's like, like benefit and opportunity for the junior ADU to be an accessory versus another single-family unit or unit that would require those SDCs.
The example that Pauline mentioned referencing a junior ADU in that community, that ADU actually had to be created out of the existing dwelling. So it was like you would convert one of the bedrooms, add some cooking facilities. Um, and so that was just a unique way to to go about it, and so that's where we started talking about, okay, we'll start with having the second ADU or one of the two be attached. Doesn't have to envelop part of the existing dwelling, so it's kind of a middle ground on that.
Kind of be flexible, but still.
Home addition.
Yeah.
This, my question is kind of related to this. Um, was there any discussion, or can you tell me a little bit about the thought process around why, like, we're specifically looking at only allowing two? Like, why not up to the amount of units that are allowed based on the zoning designation?
So I'm gonna, I'll take a stab at this and then maybe call on Renee, but um there's a lot of improvements not required for accessory dwelling units. So sidewalks, for example, um alley um approaches at either end, the SDC exemption. So there's quite a bit of a break for the um accessory dwelling units. So if we started saying you can do four, then no one's gonna do a quadplex, I guess, unless they want to do a middle housing land division, because they won't have to do any of the improvements that an ADU would trigger.
But you can, like, that's just another part of the code, right? Like, we could change the requirements for like additional you ADUs to require some of those improvements if that was a concern.
Yeah, I I'll add on to that. Um, the first part of your question was about density. Um, and it's my understanding that with ADUs and with like the um Houseful two thousand and one duplex and triplexes in the residential were already exceeding. Like, if you did the calculations on density, you're likely going to exceed it anyway. That's why we've we've um specifically exempted them from density requirements, so they're probably at or above the maximum density anyway. Um, and then just to be aware, this is providing an option, as Rachel said, where folks can come in and do these types of um accessory dwellings on their lots and not trigger um significant additional SDCs or frontage improvements. However, if they wanted to do something above and beyond this, which they can under Houseful two thousand and one, so they they're entitled to do a triplex with that has unlimited size, as long as you meet the the setbacks and the um lot coverage, et cetera, they would just have to be subject to some SDCs and some sidewalks. So they they can, they still have that option. This is just to create a a little bit more of an incentive for these smaller so middle housing types.
They kind of options restate that. Any ADU that is built on a property, if you made like three of those to a single, like, that already had a single-family home, like, that would still be buildable in the same way as a quadplex, but it would have these additional improvement requirements.
Correct.
Is that roughly correct? Okay.
How would building code review that as a commercial?
Uh, it just depends on how many units are connected. So if you've got three units connected that are dwelling units, then it's probably gonna be uh commercial, if you do townhouse separations, which are vertical. And then, but you could have two duplexes.
So if you had a bunch of ADUs on the same lot, for instance, let's say it gets up to like four, you know, main house and three or four ADUs, you could, you would review those under the residential code, the ADUs.
Yes.
Pre-standing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was, there was a little bit of this, um, so very beginning, the change of the definition to attached, adding, uh. Dwelling units, um, considered attached, they're constructed above or below, so trying to think of how that would work, so the idea is that. I guess, I guess I'm wondering, so with that, I mean, is the intent there to have essentially a fourplex building, maybe a property line down the middle? And it would be considered?
The word attached just comes into, we use that term, um, when it comes to ADUs or, and do, well duplexes, triplexes. Um, because if they aren't attached, they have to be six feet apart. And to make it clear objective, what does attached mean? That's why you see the percentages in there and then, um, over the past couple of years, um. There's been comments about, well, I'm not attached wall to wall, we're actually building an ADU above our garage. But we had, we didn't have that in here, so that's why you see that, um, portion added. But it really just is how the term is used in the development code for duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. And then if you go to the townhome section, it has its own, um, attached definition, which is still the twenty-five percent. It's just making sure that they're not just touching barely and that way they avoid the six feet.
So if we go back to Nathan's discussion, so we can get up to two with this added on, either. On, on the building or onto the building or in the back, but to go to three, that wouldn't go through, the third one would be triggering. More review, SDCs, et cetera, right?
Right, so under the proposed draft, you can have a single dwelling unit and attached and detached ADU, so it's still three dwelling units. But you fall under the accessory dwelling units, not middle housing, can never new middle housing land division. If you want to do, um, a house and add on three additional units and your fourplex. And there's a way to get there, easy way, it's just you have some more improvements.
Was, um. I, I hate the name row house, by the way.
Such a challenge.
What others, were there other terms?
Because. Attached townhome.
Yeah, because I mean, it's just, you're taking a word that, that, uh, this is, that threw me for a loop instantly and it took me a while to shake it, because it's like a row house. Usually row house and townhouse is synonymous. And, um, yeah, I, I was just wondering if there's any other options, but attached town.
Why don't you give the history, because townhome does have building code implications, but, so we wanted to be very clear.
Was, didn't like how, um, our, our definition in building code is that it's three or more attached units. Which attached isn't really defined very well, but if, if they look attached and, um, especially if they're structurally dependent or one couldn't. Be taken away without the other ones falling over, that, that would be structurally dependent. Um, but the, the building code says that townhouses are three or more attached. So if you've got two, you can still build, the, the, the residential code lets you do it, but it's not called, it just says use townhouse separations. So then if you want to build one, that's not really a townhouse either, but you can call it a zero lot line.
And the whole go with this, um, code update is to make it really clear that these are not townhomes, these are not attached. I know the terms and other codes are used, um, interchangeably, but then I've seen some where, you know, they did define row houses and so. Um, it looks and acts like a townhome really, but it is going to be called a row house because it can not be attached to its neighbor. Has to be structurally independent.
Pseudo-townhouse.
There, there were a lot of emails that went around on this naming, I, I, I don't. Tell you about all of it, but, but this is what the happy sort of medium that we.
We're all okay with this.
I mean, I guess there's zero lot line development and that's, I guess that's just only on one side.
Correct, so, um, we do have developers that use that one, the zero lot line is on one side zero, the other side's ten, so that you still have usable yard space. And then there's courtyard, which is the three and the seven. Mm-hmm, this is the only option that allows the minimum of zero, not attached on both sides.
Question, so, this, this type of building separate structures like. Together, I mean, like, this is common in, like, New York City and other places, it's not unusual, it's just.
Even our buildings downtown, I mean, they are zero. Constructed.
Yeah.
They're not attached.
Question on the discussion with developers about the financial implications, it's much easier to do a single family than townhomes or any kind of multifamily. And a lot of it is with the insurance and wasn't there a state initiative from the legislature trying to calm that down so we can get condos built, for sale condos?
That's the condo liability rule.
Yes, yeah.
Um, I, I don't know, have you been tracking that one?
Only by ways.
Yeah, we, we have not been, we've got a lot of other bills that we are actively participating in, but that's not one of them, but there is an effort to. Make that more attractive, um, of an option, just by removing some of the liability that the developer got. But that's at a statewide level, it's, it's, um, you know, unbilled.
Uh, speaking to, on, on the row houses again, um. I'm trying to think of like where in town these would kind of work well and like I can basically think of like. New master plan developments that have like these kind of small lots, this is kind of feasible and then downtown. Are there any other places like that you guys came up with where in town where like these kind of row houses would?
I can speak to that.
Sure.
I mean, from a developer standpoint, like, this would be perfect for where, like, you have, like, say on the east side. Where eventually these larger lots that are like one acre that are on septic can be converted into. Um, that can connect into sewer and then they can be developed again with multiple housing, it's great for infill.
So like subdividing large lot infill development?
Yeah. I think this will feed into like a lot of infill, um, areas and, I mean. From, from my standpoint, I think this is great, I think we struggled in some jurisdictions where we've done. Townhomes where a lot of people want these like detached townhomes, but we, you know, we get creative, you have them attached at the garage and. So they still get that separation, but this is gonna clear that up, oh, quite well, um, but. My standpoint, this would be like perfect, yeah, for redevelopment and fill, and then yes, I think there are master plans that. This would be, I'm sure they'll include this in, they'll include this product type, that would be my guess.
Yeah, and I don't have, um, the code open in front of me, but townhome and row house lots are significantly smaller. Than your single detached unit, so if you have an acre of property, you're gonna fit a lot more row houses on it. Than you would the single units, which start at four thousand square foot a lot, and I think the townhouses are maybe twelve and fifteen hundred square feet or row houses.
This could be really good for starter housing.
I just want to add, uh, the chart you put in there as far as what's been happening, tracking over the last year, so I really appreciate that as a planning commission, that was great. And I'd thank staff for that, because it really helps us say if we did something, three years, five years, I just kind of like the tree code, we're gonna monitor, let's monitor some of this stuff and. It was great to see the progress, really.
Um, does anybody have any more questions?
Yes.
I want to be careful, we want to be careful, I mean, there's deliberation, we could be like moving into deliberation, but let's try and focus on questions.
I just have a question, um. On, on the ADU, the attachment requirement, if, but there, what was the reason that you have to attach it to the primary house versus. Um, maybe the two ADUs attached, which I was imagining it might accommodate more lots, might be able to have space that way.
Uh, just looking at other examples and.
So like a mini duplex?
Yeah.
So yeah, you'd have your primary dwelling unit and then two ADUs.
Someone had a detached three car garage or detached two car garage, they could potentially split that into two ADUs that are attached, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just thinking.
We get to deliberation, I'll back you up on that.
No, I, I was just curious, I was just curious what the reasoning was behind that.
Well, we were looking at cities and a lot, again, have the junior ADUs, um, our flexibility is saying we just don't care what, which ones attached. You know, size requirement wise, but just looking at other cities, most of them do require at least one to be attached, I think so that. Still looks like part of the dwelling unit is still accessory to the primary dwelling unit on site and then that you still have the one detached, which everyone's familiar with.
It's not an accessory to the accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, okay, okay, um, uh, my, my other question is. I don't know, maybe this is going up, but what, is it possible to allow this type of thing on a property that's in a commercial zone? For example, there's a, I know there's a lot of areas where you have old houses that are now commercial, we zoned, is there. Are, would maybe permitted to add an ADU?
We just, um, cleaned up the code on my last package of amendments. Clarifying that if there is a legally approved, single detached dwelling unit in the commercial zones, that they can have an ADU. I need to check, um, to see. Then this would carry over to that too. Because they can already, it already clearly says in the commercial zone and the mixed use zone, and I'll double check the, um, language. Um, during public comments to make sure that they would be able to have two as well, because we already allow the one. For existing single dwelling units, they can already have one, uh, so I'll just clarify that they can have the.
And if they converted the commercial with commercial being the primary use in those zones, could they put a little residential one in the back, a little?
That'd be mixed use, is what we would consider.
So is that, that, is that a different process to add the first?
It probably would trigger some stuff to go to mixed use versus an ADU.
Yeah. Living behind the store.
Since I have it up, because I know you're sharing the screen, Pauline, so it does say, and it's plural, in our, in our commercial zones. As allowed uses accessory dwelling units. On a lot or parcel that contains an existing legally established, single unit dwelling, then it has an asterisk that takes you to chapter three point six.
Okay.
So I think that flow will get you to the same result for commercially owned property if. The existing single unit dwelling is legally established and it's okay, non-conforming in that way.
Um, I had a question about the, so the second kitchen may not be in a portion of dwelling unit, or let's see, it was. Uh, oh yeah, okay, the second kitchen may be in a portion of a dwelling unit only if internal access between the second kitchen and the main dwelling units. The living space is maintained, um, I mean, was that there to try and prevent sneaky STRs? Or things like that? And so it's saying that four probably isn't good enough and then we'll do it too, I mean, I was just thinking like, do we even need? That, that first point of.
I mean, we, we've run into this before, I mean, a lot of the rules that we have are because we've had incidences where people were. Essentially building a duplex and saying it's not a duplex, you know, how can you tell me this is a duplex, um, it's, I just happen to have three bedrooms on each side of these. Unconnected houses with two kitchen, you know, kitchen, each, they, they're each qualifies a, a standalone dwelling unit. So I think that the reason that that's in there is to just sort of keep, keep it in the, keep it in the, in the single. Single dwelling unit and not a duplex.
And I, uh, Portland, um, this is where we got a lot of language from Portland and Springfield. And Brad helped me, but I believe there's some different building codes, if you walled off that second kitchen, then you're now a duplex. And so looking at Portland's SOP, I think it related back to even the building codes, making sure that it is accessible to the entire family. At home.
Because I guess this is like the, you know, your mother-in-law comes and live with you and she can have her own space or something like that, that's kind of what this.
Yeah, Portland's goes so far to say you can't even have a door, we're just saying it has to maintain.
Because I mean, I just, I just kind of wonder if, I mean, if you're gonna sign a thing that says you're not gonna do it. You know, who, that you could easily put that door in and get your inspection passed and then lock the door.
Don't say that out loud.
I don't think, I don't think, yeah. I don't think I thought something too clever, um. But no, I mean, I just, I kind of wonder if that's even needed, um, as well as number three, the kitchen must comply with current building codes.
I mean.
I mean, that's kind of a given, right?
The kitchen's gonna come to building anyway, right? So the question then is if you're triggering more work to create either a duplex or an ADU in there, to get up to eight hundred or, or cut the house in half or slice it. Or is Ali, and is the door to go see grandma open or not, I mean, it's, I, I don't know, I like the fine tuning of this so that we covered these different scenarios. While we're delivering, sorry.
Some of it's redundant, well, the number, the number one about the maintaining the access, it, it seems to, this is deliberation, but. Seems to like kind of limit it, uh, but anyways, I'm just wondering about a conversation behind it and that's why I figured you guys could say is that it's kind of a further buffer. Oh, so for the ADU floor area, um, under B, they have, uh, for the purpose of measuring ADU size in the subsection.
Yep.
Um, I mean, we kind of, in our definitions, we have a, a definition of floor area. Which this is almost verbatim, except for it says that, uh, about the stairs. And so this is, uh, stairs are counted once unless the area under the stairs is part of the ADU floor plan. And the main definition says part of the dwelling unit, which is kind of funny that it mentions dwelling unit in a definition. Development code, they might be building commercial stairs.
Uh, well, for this particular one, um, this is clear and objective for the planners, because we see ADUs with stairs. And sometimes the area under the stairs is actually part of the garage. And so there was a question on whether it would count once or twice, sometimes the area under the stairs is a closet or it's the bathroom. And so that would be clear that that is counted twice, under the stairs and above. So we've added this, it's been in here for quite some time, just to provide very clear, um.
Floor, yeah.
And then we had an extra request where you see the five feet, because there's a lot of slope ceilings and I'll help that. Because from the outside, it doesn't add to the massing of the structure, so, yep.
Yeah, no, I was just kind of wondering when you see how to measure floor area here and how to measure floor area somewhere else.
I'll double check that.
Kind of the same, it, it could be probably cleaned up. That's all I had. Oh yeah, um, I hate the name row house.
Any more questions?
One more, um, well, yeah, so I learned about ways to measure sewage, which was interesting. Uh, but in the water, in the runoff, there's like, uh, when runoff from this non-city owned property is in excess of the pre-development rates or volumes. So how in the world do we know the pre-development rates and volumes of runoff from a piece of property that's now gonna have. An additional dwelling unit on it, thinking about my neighborhood and the place where all the water pools, when we have one of those big storms. And, but how in the world would you have a measurement for that before and after?
Or does it, does it pool in the unpaved street?
It does, yes, it does, yes, which is great, because then it just, you know. Uh, whatever that is called, just slipping from leaps into the ground, yes. I'm just curious about how we, how we measure that before and after.
Engineers do that all the time. Soil types and impervious surfaces existing and then what's proposed and do some counts.
Okay.
So you have to have a stormwater plant, essentially, right?
For this type of development. But only if it's.
When we get stormwater plants with single, single unit, you're just saying building permit, you're gonna, sure, you're gonna maintain your stormwater inside.
Yeah, that's not big enough to get a, uh, engineering design, then it's gonna be the building inspector just saying that you've created more runoff. With your development, now you need to retain.
I'd just like to say, I thought you guys did a really good job on this one, because I pretty much was able to understand.
More like it looks like a duck, it is a duck type situation where all, all parts of the house need to be able to egress through the front door. The front door has some different requirements, so if you don't put that connection between the two units. You'll now need a new front door and then now that is pretty much a complete dwelling in itself as defined, it'll have kitchen, living, all the things. So now you've got another dwelling, so that's why, um.
That's job one.
You mostly have to have that connection between the two units.
Okay, makes sense. Yeah, I was funny, when I was look reviewing this, I had the building code up on one of my screens and then development code up on the other. It just gets sketchy for me when it's like. You know, there's kind of that, that overlap or, but not. You don't want developing code saying you can do all these things, and then building codes are like, yeah, no, you can't.
Yeah, he's probably, yeah.
Any more questions? Okay, next, we'll go ahead and move into public testimony. Um, I will go through the ones here. But if you are online or if you have any online attendees, you can go ahead and raise your hand. We will get to after in-person testimony. Um, first we'll start with Ryan Starr, and if you could come up to the podium over here.
Hey. Uh, my name is Ryan Starr. I am an architect here in town. Um, I appeal largely with. Uh, residential additions, uh, A D Us. And other infill type. Type developments, um. Being. Inspiration for the row house, sorry Scott. You and I can talk later, about to name the additions, but, um, the, the. Idea there was townhomes become really difficult to finance because you have to front the cost for so many units. And so there are lots and lots of infill wa- uh, properties that are perfect for townhouses. But the local. Owner doesn't have the money to be able to do that, and it's only larger developers that are then able to do that. So. In order to develop that, that property owner then has to sell to somebody with the money to be able to front for. Townhouse units, right? But. If they're able to subdivide this larger property of theirs and build one house at a time. Then they can build the one and sell it, build one and sell it, build one and sell it. By the end of it, they've done effectively what a townhouse has done. It's just, it allows them to separate that out and it allows. It, it is then allowing money to stay more local and, and be able to help the people that. Were already sitting on the land instead of having to sell it to let somebody else make all the money off of it. Um, the other thing that comes up is where. The, the idea that kind of came up. Right as interest rates were going from, uh, one and a half, two percent to eight percent. If something like that happens in, in the process of a development, that completely derails a whole entire development. And you have to, the way townhomes are currently, you have to approach that all in one shot. So if you've gone through the trouble to go and get permitted these four units, and then all of a sudden. Um, interest rates have increased to the point to where you can only afford to do two instead of the four, well. Then you can just build two, but now you have to go and redo your entire approval process. And, and so it, it, it's just really difficult to do townhouses the way they are currently. And then the last thing is, was kind of mentioned a little bit, um, but when things are structurally attached. And right now townhomes can, or they don't necessarily have to be, but if they are. It makes it near impossible to add a bedroom or something to one of those townhouse units without. Having to go and reevaluate the entire collection of buildings. So this makes them separate, makes that easier to do, so that the unit can actually grow with the family that's in it, because right now they're often just. Just deal with it or sell it and move. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Um, I should note, these are all in favor. Um, okay, um, I'm not separating them out for anything. Okay, David Welton?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, Chair Clinton, Commissioners, my name is Dave Welton. I'm a volunteer with Bend D M V. Uh, you've heard that Ben has a housing shortage in the thousands of units. But while units works for policy talk, I want to remind everyone that what we're talking about are homes, homes where people live. Where we raise our kids, where we grow old, where we stay warm when the snow hits. Each one of those missing homes means difficult decisions for someone. Do I keep my job but move to say Prineville? Do I leave the area entirely? Where will I go? This has huge human, economic and environmental costs. Last week I got to see a friend who's been priced out. We used to go mountain biking all the time, now he's only in town for work. I think everyone knows someone in this situation. Businesses struggle to hire. All those people who work here but drive in from nearby cities, putting out a lot more carbon dioxide than if they lived in town. We need more homes of all shapes and sizes that make efficient use of the land. Within our urban growth boundary, and I'm grateful to see the planning department coming forward with some very solid work. That will allow more types of housing. Thank you. And I'll also add that this type of, uh, the, the row, row houses. Uh, it's, it's very common and popular kind of infill in Houston. They've, they've done a lot of this, uh, with good effect to get more infill rather than. Just the sprawly aspect of that city. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Last is Austin Masolini.
Hello, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Austin Masolini, um, resident Bend and I support the changes to the development code. These changes will support development in the type of housing Ben needs most. Um. That of modest sized homes and starter homes also allows for greater land infill and density, reducing the need for urban sprawl to satisfy our housing shortage. These changes to the requirements for accessory dwelling units are sensible and encourage new units from both individual families to larger developers. I encourage the planning commission to recommend to adopt these changes, and these changes will promote more housing supply. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Looks like we have no attendees online. So we will go ahead and close the public testimony. Um, staff have any comments based on that?
Just housing solutions, um. With. All right, let me rephrase. These are housing solutions despite market fluctuations, and I think Ryan spoke really well to that.
Okay, um, does anyone have any questions before we? Move on to deliberation?
Same for me.
Okay, I think I already stated, but I've heard this, I'm closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Um, next is deliberation, does anyone want to start? I mean, I think it's great, but. I like the idea of the extra kitchen, of the second kitchen. I think. Would be wonderful for people who have. Intergenerous, family, multi-generations, living in the same house, I think that's a great solution. Actually, I think all of these are great ideas, I think, uh, but the infill, with the row houses and, um. Well, I guess. I would, if I were writing, uh, like you guys did the research, but, um. If I were writing, I'd probably, well, the two A D Us to be attached to each other, but. I'm not gonna hold it up over that. I, I think, I think it's a great opportunity.
I would be, yeah, I'd be fine with the same thing, uh, in far as the A D Us, they don't have to be attached to the primary dwelling unit.
If they're attached to each other.
If they're attached to each other, if all three are attached, then that's a triplex, right? And then that would be considered, and then that goes into. Commercial stuff, so.
You can still do a townhouse separation, and it would be residential.
It's just wouldn't be A D U.
Uh, no, you could do, and I mean, A D U is more of a planning term. Um, but if you could do a small. Third unit with a townhouse separation, it would be fine.
But that would be a different, that would be a property line, right?
Ah, you don't have to have property lines, no. I mean, that's what some of these quadplexes are doing, is they're putting four. Like a cross, you know, townhouse separations between all four and they're on one lot.
So just, just so, just this scenario, if, you know, I'm doing my math right, if one is eight hundred and the other one's five hundred, it's thirteen hundred square feet. And you could have that above a garage. So you'd have a twenty-six hundred square foot structure. That would be accessory. The accessory structure, and then you could have a primary structure, we don't, there's no relationship, so you could have a. Fifteen hundred square foot house with a twenty-three hundred square foot structure behind it.
Right.
So just wanted to, just so if you, if you understand what, what that would allow was. Putting it out there.
If we can add eight hundred and a five hundred, that's thirteen hundred total. If they're attached to the main house or. Attached to each other, it's still only thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred square feet, but they could be on top of a garage. A thirteen hundred square foot shop.
Oh, you don't have to separate the, the two.
I'm just, I'm just playing out sort of a wish-based scenario for this thing.
You had a detached garage and you put the two units up on top. Yeah. Now they have a huge problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, you still have to learn with a setback and, and, you know, your step property and.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's not uncommon to have houses, houses with shops larger than the house.
Well, I, I would just say, I don't know what the commissioners are saying, I just like the idea of having a lot of options. My little planner brain kicks in. Options, options, so that somebody that has these odd lots, special lots, special circumstances, intergenerational, whatever it is, they can go down through the menu. And find something to do here, as some of our speakers said, and get it done. Um, I'm ready to go.
Yeah, I'm also. Very supportive. Of this in general, um. Like you've mentioned. I would, I. More options, more better, like. Right, bring us six more, please. Come up with some new ones that can be exciting. Um, and then I, I don't really have anything else. Super valuable to say other than, and it's more of a joke, but. Like, I'm so surprised that all of those giant houses. That all the rich people are living in only have one kitchen. I guess that's true, you could also build like a. Eight thousand square foot.
Chef's kitchen.
McMansion, or you can have three units of. Modus side.
Fair, some of them probably have four ovens, multiple stoves, multiple fridges.
Garage fridge.
The kitchen is just two stores.
The whole outdoor kitchen.
Well, and this will allow, yeah, the, you know, the. The downstairs staff, the kitchen.
Babysitter.
Very cool.
Uh, I have probably more comments than questions, first of all, uh, so, uh. I wondered about, since we're talking about sidewalks, uh, sidewalk master plan was one of the things that we had requested from the city council. I don't know if that is going forward at all.
Some of the goals.
It's part of the goals.
Part of the goals, awesome.
Bicycle pedestrian master plan.
Fantastic. Uh, second, this, um, table that has the housing, I have been asking for this for years. Um, so I really appreciate that, uh, we've only built seventeen percent of the housing that we needed, which is part of the reason why we're in the. Difficulty that we're in and only six percent of the. Single family attached or multifamily, so, thank you. Uh, really, really appreciated the findings that were written, that they were very. Understandable, but they also gave a lot of information, like only eight percent of the local workforce can afford a home in Bend. I mean, just, you know, really. Calling that out for what it is and where we live. Uh, so thank you very much for, for all of that. I mean, at the last planning commission, we heard. Uh, that we have to come up with thirty-five thousand, was that what it was? Thirty-five thousand more? Housing units, or I don't know what the terminology dwellings, whatever the, a lot. So being able to put them in without having to go from here to Prineville would be fantastic. I'm all in favor of.
And I have one last question or, or, or comment, if any one of the three of you have found it from other cities' research, but is there any way to? Get a handle on how many of the A D Us are for visitors, intergenerational? Caregivers or just plain old rentals, you know, because there's so many great different people in each one of those categories. I know it's hard, because you can't really ask that. I don't think you can ask that on a building permit or a planning permit. Um, was there any statistics anywhere that anybody did, if you were a liar, anybody did any research?
The city doesn't have capacity to do that research. There is talk at state level about doing like a rental registry. Um, I know there was a bill this session and it has, I think officially died, um, but there's. Continued talks at a state level about how that could be, um, carried out because they recognize that they need to keep track. And keep track of what type of housing we have and who's living in it and how it's being. Um, given to the community, and so I think that's a greater statewide topic that will continue to be discussed.
We do have though, the regulations about rental, uh, short-term rentals. So that is registered, that is registered and recorded and monitored.
We do have a short-term rental registry, and we also have regulations that restrict how close they can be to one another in a community.
Any other thoughts, or does anyone? Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, oh, you got it.
No, I was just gonna say, I, um.
You came up with the name?
Oh, I wish. Uh, uh, to get rid of the.
Home Scott houses.
Winter houses will be.
Um, I would want to get rid of the, the has to be, at least one has to be attached to the primary dwelling unit.
I would support that.
Kind of clarification. So are you saying that, what, what I've heard the commission say is that they're okay with having the single detached dwelling unit and the two A D Us attached?
Or.
Or are you saying three separate units can be detached?
I, I would say just get rid of the requirement that, that one must be attached to the main building. Because you could, so that way you could have, depending on the property and the size and shape or whatever, if you had enough space, you could have a couple of. Small D, uh, A D Us, or if you had a large garage and they could be attached, or you can have it attached to the main house and then have a. A third one by itself, and just eliminating that. Kind of, I don't know if there would need to be further clarification in terms of this would be allowed, but I'm thinking that if it says it's not restricted, then.
Yeah, I'm thinking on, um.
The little.
The number two, the little, um, A. Um. Little one, little two, just striking those. Um, there's still the requirement that if they're all detached, they have to be six feet apart from each other, just like triflexes and duplexes and everything else. So just say a maximum of two A D Us are allowed per lot or parcel. And then the exception.
Then the exception, yeah.
Yes. I, I, I support that. I think it gives a lot more flexibility for different, um. For different lots or based on where the main house is situated, there may or may not be room. To attach to the main house, but there may very well be room on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, probably will be very difficult.
Should we do amendment before the motion, do the motion and then?
Do the motion and then amend the motion.
Introducing the main motion and having that second at his best first.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I move to recommend that the city council approve the legislative amendments to the Bend Development Code to facilitate housing options based on the draft findings provided by staff.
Second.
Who was the one?
Alright, two out of three, rock, paper, scissors.
By a hair.
Alright, if somebody wants to move to amend, they can do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend. Um. Striking, uh. What is that, one and two, oh gosh. Under three point six point. Two zero zero residential uses. B two, A. Eliminating one and two. Again.
I, I think we should probably read the sentences.
When one A D U is provided, the unit may be attached or detached to the primary dwelling unit. And when two A D Us are provided, at least one A D U must be attached to the primary dwelling unit, and to get rid of those.
Be straightforward.
Can I just ask again what, what the rationale was for attaching one? Was it mainly the fitting into a neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at best practices from other cities, um, the junior idea, um, and the, again, that required the small one to be attached to the house. We were adding more flexibility. By saying we don't care which one is attached to the house, but just looking at other cities.
I think it's scale.
Scale.
Exactly, accessory, just, just.
The requirements have one be six hundred and one be eight hundred, correct?
Five hundred.
Five hundred and eight hundred.
Either or.
Um, is there any energy in allowing both of them to be eight hundred?
I, 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 I would. I would consider that.
I think at that point, for me, it, you're starting to kind of. blur the line of like the purpose of, like they're saying these accessory dwelling units, and then at that point. Perhaps looking at alternative, um, development options too.
I think it's.
It, it kind of takes out a, a, been, been saying the spirit of. This dwelling unit, but I like the idea of having a scaled option, so like you can do the eight hundred, and then if you want to do a second one, you can do a five hundred, which is. Very much as a single bedroom apartment.
Yes.
And so, but then with.
And so, but then with eight hundred, you could have a two-bedroom apartment, and so.
I think it's.
Personally, I think I'd like the spirit of the scale.
Are still so much smaller than most development that we see here in Bend, though, I kind of feel at least. Like if it was eight hundred, that's still, like. Something that we'd want to incentivize, like, the idea is like the, the ADUs, they have less hoops that you have to go through, right? Like, I feel like eight hundred is still within that range for me. I think there's that, that trying to figure out, like, if it's, if your property's big enough, then you would subdivide it and have separate homes, if the ADU. Yeah, I, I, I think if I can get a second on my amendment, that'd be awesome. No, I, and I guess, you want to just vote on that, that amendment thing, and then we can talk about the ADU? Just so we don't lose our.
Okay.
Aye.
Votes.
Nope.
Oh. Which, which one are we voting on?
The amendment.
The amendment to get rid of the detached or the attached.
Alright, aye.
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 Oh, aye, aye.
Okay.
Is that your amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
But back to the ADU thing, I, I, kind of, I mean, I got reactions, I agree with you, but I also think that it. I feel like that. I feel like we're gonna approach changing ADU requirements, it needs to be more like, kind of in its own package type of thing.
And I also think, back to Colin's point about scale too, you know, when the yards are getting extra stuff put in there about scale. But I think at a minimum, five hundred is probably something we never want to go below, because you get the bedroom, a little kitchenette and a, a, a bathroom. That's a unit that a lot of folks could use, and eight hundred, you're kicking into the extra space. And when I saw some of the prices of how to put a single ADU on some of these sites.
Yeah. I mean, that's a really interesting, like, point, which is if we have, like. Having a structure that is required to be that small somewhere in our code. Kind of creates the space for that to exist, right?
Right.
And so, having like multiple sizes of ADUs, like.
The menu.
Possible.
Yeah.
Um, can kind of create that even smaller valuable housing, so.
I think that's right, that, that if we don't, if we increase the size, then we aren't going to get five hundreds, we're going to get eight hundreds.
Okay, well, we'll get two eight hundreds every single time.
Every single, exactly, exactly.
And also, if you think of, uh, what I went into in another city of intergenerational and caretakers. Who are in the house pretty much, are they wrong with the main house, they just need the bedroom, the bathroom, and maybe a little kitchenette. Uh, you're, that's a, a good segment to make sure we got a product for.
Yeah.
So you have to have a bigger thing, so, anyway, so we, we, did we approve you, I think?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Thank you guys for the discussion, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Not me. I approve this.
I'll run to the main one.
Hang on a second. Alright.
Now, we, we.
The second for the amended motion?
So now we have to vote on my motion.
Correct, that's right. It's been amended.
Chair, all those. Good.
All in favor of?
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Good work as well.
Thanks, Pauline. Oh, we need to nominate a planning commissioner, um, what day in force? Does anyone want to go right off the bat?
Yeah. I'm almost like, where I can do this.
Scott's got it, thank you, Scott.
Okay.
I was actually going to check my calendar.
But he gets how councilly doesn't like her.
I'm locked out of my city email, so if you could email it to my email.
Okay.
Maybe you can think of a new name, Scott.
There you go.
City Council for a change.
Alright, I, no, I, I'm kinda.
How about Roll Tides?
Pots in the UK.
What about a Yimby House?
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number three, approval of minutes. Does anyone have any issues with the minutes?
Thanks, bro.
Everyone approve?
Yep.
Proven, approved, okay.
Aye, yeah.
Um, communications reports from planning commissioners. Anybody?
I do, I took the, um. I went to the city council meeting to talk about the master plan amendment for OSU Cascades. And the council, um, continued the hearing until July. Uh, asking that Parks and Rec and OSU worked things out, they still hadn't worked things out by then. Uh, and so the council had the same questions immediately that we did. Um, and because of budgets, uh, and other things on their priorities, they moved it out to July. So hopefully, given OSU's now get pushed out, they will have some incentive to get that result, so, I had that.
Did they, did they do everything on the language? The low ground.
Oh, the, uh, 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 Karen included a diagram. To, in the packet that showed what she was talking about, about how far it would be from the hillside and whether it would need to be. Uh, so that explained that really, really well, so there was no need for that, yeah, it was really good.
In terms of your other recommended amendments, the applicant just went and made those changes, and so those were in the packet for council, it was just this access.
Just the access thing.
VP, RP, top party that was outstanding.
I, I have one other thing, and that is a request, um, we had this water overlay zone. Uh, at the Rimrock West subdivision, and I had requested a map that showed the Rimrock West subdivision boundaries. And I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't lost, and we're going to get that, uh, ahead of time before we, this comes back on our agenda.
The, the record's still open, uh, the record's still open on that one, so I'm going to ask us not to talk about it, but I know the staff heard. Uh, that request at the, at the, during the public.
Okay, thank you.
Need to follow up with staff, if you have questions.
Oh, alright. Okay.
Individually, would do.
Alright.
The first.
Okay.
With procedural question, uh, uh, when we come in to, to vote on that, that night. We will have had to do all, be ready to vote, so are they getting that?
You should, you.
Any, any additional materials would be in advance?
Yes, you should be, you should have reviewed the record to that point and be prepared to deliberate, I think staff will probably provide some, a bit of a summary. Of what happened between then and when you return, um, summarize some of the additional material, but, um, it would be. Much appreciated, and you will be helped if you've reviewed it all independently by then too.
And do we have a date for that again?
That was going to be in my report, yes, May twelfth, and that's the only item on that agenda for your evening.
Um, any other reports, or do we want to run to Renee? Each?
I have one thing, I, uh, Suzanne and I went to a workforce housing and. Uh, thing and, and listened to, they had representatives from, um, Rooted Homes and Habitat for Humanity and. And, you know, there was something that one of the, that got from Rooted Homes mentioned, um, inclusionary zoning. And, you know, when we have these master plans, they come through and we ask. Okay, are there affordable units? And right now, there's nothing in the city. Like, there's nothing in our master plans that say you have to have a certain. Afford, number of affordable homes or something like that, right?
Some of them do.
Some, some of them are in the master plans, but.
In the, in the comprehensive plan policies, in the expansion areas, so there, there are some, but it. But it's not all of them, and it's set up in the comp plan.
So, for instance, like, uh. You know, uh, one of the areas of UGB, there might be a couple of different master plans that go in there. Do they, so, so in those areas in UGB, do they have to, they all have affordable housing components in it?
As I said, each, each one is different, if you remember Ponderosa Master Plan that we just worked on, in fact, we amended some of the affordability ratios. Uh, you, you recommended that, remember council did, um, that was one that, that has. Affordable housing policies that must be complied with at a master plan. Um, there are other ones, there were a few, or at least one, two of them, I think, on the west side.
Uh, are they, are they put into place at the time of expansion?
Yeah, they were, they were all adopted as policies at the time of.
Early expansion.
Okay.
At the UGB expansion.
Yeah, because it, I mean, it was just, you know, it's kind of brainstorming, because the problem is, is you can't have, when, when a. Develop, even if it's not master plan, or, well, I guess it's not master plan, it's not going to come before us, but like. You know, we have some of these plans coming for us, and it's like, well, if they didn't know that there is. Uh, you know, if it wasn't required, it, it's not like, the, the one when we were talking about, uh, we were, we were asking about, oh, ownership or something like that, right? Home ownership, it's not like you can curveball at the, at the eleventh hour and say. Oh, well, we didn't require it for these, but now we're, you know, we're feeling good today. We, we're feeling like people need to have ownership, and so, I, I mean, I was just kind of wondering about, um. If the planning commission can kind of have its own. Like, not requirements, but just something, I don't know, I was just throwing it out there, as, as daydreaming about. Having some inclusionary zoning that would be established. That would be a part of the process, without, without it being an, at a, an eleventh hour kind of thing, like.
I mean, I can, I can give you some background on it, I mean, Oregon's one of the few states that. Used to prohibit inclusionary zoning, and the, the rules changed probably five or six years ago, six years ago, the legislature. Changed it to allow for inclusionary zoning, and, and it's been that long since I actually looked at the, the newly adopted law. So I can't really give you the details, but it's my understanding that it's mostly related to multifamily. And a certain number of units that you can, you can do, there was discussion at the council level of whether they wanted to adopt that locally. When, you know, after the legislation did that, and then, and our council chose not to. Um, they did include those, uh, affordable housing policies in the comprehensive plan, but that was based upon. Um, property owner, um, sort of. Uh, um, I wouldn't, I'd say it's more than cooperation, but, but act, active cooperation. Because they felt that made their properties more desirable to bring in, if they could bring to the table, hey, I'm going to do this affordable housing. It wasn't adversarially imposed upon the, the property owners, they were like, yeah, we'll do that affordable housing if you.
If you bring us into the UGB.
Into the UGB, so it was, it was an agreeable type of, of, of an arrangement. With those owners, so.
Does the, and again, you said you haven't seen it in a while, but it, was the law going in just a percentage, you should have X, or was it X plus? You can get out of it if you put a fee in the pot, a housing pod.
I, 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 it's been so long, I can't even speculate what it was.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm trying to remind myself which Oregon cities have opted in to this, I think. Portland, yeah, he was talking about.
Was the only one, I'm not sure if that's still the case, but most cities, including other mid-sized cities like that.
It's twenty percent.
And don't quote me on it, but it was like anything over twenty units.
Yes.
And so we got a lot of, a lot of nineteen unit.
Right, yeah, triggered, right.
That's just.
The game's.
It's a really good forum, though, it was.
I mean, you know, I assume, and I was like, well.
Figure out how to make affordable housing available in Bend.
I mean, sometimes the, it comes from above and sometimes it can come from below, and. Even if, you know, I thought if there was a situation where planning commissioner says, no, we, we want to have a certain percentage of units be. Either ownership or affordable, and so we don't recommend it, it's not like it doesn't get built, it just will kick up, and we don't recommend it.
And, and I, I, I think Ben has been very progressive on this, I mean, that was twenty sixteen when we did the UGB expansion, and probably half of the. Expansion areas have some form of affordable housing required, and since then, there have been three UGB expansions. All of them related to, um, you know, legislative authority that was given to Ben to do it, but the, the one that's on, under construction. That's out on Highway twenty, um, Parkside Place, that's an affordable housing development. Stevens Roach Tract, which is just to the east of the Stevens Ranch, which is under construction right now. Um, was added to the UGB after our twenty sixteen expansion, that is a very large affordable housing funded to it, and then the one. That is just approved, uh, or the council just approved the conceptual plan for Caldera Ranch, which is just south of Knott Road. South of the high school. Um, a hundred acres, close to a hundred acres, I forget the number of units, but a considerable number of those are affordable as well, so we've added.
Yeah. But are those lots?
Averages, right?
I mean, rentals versus.
Oh.
Yeah, because that, that was the thing, the business model of the, the way that Habitat is doing it, like, where the, but still rail. And rooted is, is, is it's great because it, you know, they get subsidies and you can't just subsidize everything. Because someone's got to contribute to the subsidies. But like, I, I like how it was, it was a low price to get people in, and then it's not necessarily an investment, because it can only. Accrue, you know, it could only, yeah, it can only appreciate at a certain level, and then. Uh, but at least it gets them in the door, and every month, they're not just burning money, they're putting it essentially in a bank account.
Gives them more stability and a little more, they do build up some equity. Or potentially, at least, depending on property values, right?
It's better than rent, I mean, renting, all the money you pay goes away.
Yeah.
You don't get it back.
So, I mean, they, they do have an option to walk, to move up eventually with a little bit more stability. Or stay, stay long ti, stay long term with a less.
And not everybody wants to be a homeowner either, some people would prefer to rent. When things go wrong, they just call somebody up and get it fixed, rather than being responsible for doing that. So people on really low income, fixed income, it may not, it, rental may actually be a better long-term option.
We really need both, we, we really need, we really need good rental housing, affordable rental housing, and we also need starter homes. For, for people as well.
What we don't have are manufactured home parks, we had a lot of those that got, uh. Torn down and converted into subdivisions in the early two thousands, right? During the previous boom, and we didn't really replace any of those. And I think that's probably the traditional, most affordable housing would be.
There's a lot of fees associated with that, I've been trying to help my mom get her stuff figured out, and.
Mm-hmm.
You know, she's getting older, and I remember just thought, oh, manufactured home, I called on one and talked about it with someone for a little bit, and the monthly fees for that are. They were higher than condos.
Oh, that's interesting.
I mean, it was.
You have to lease the space.
And they depreciate a lot.
Rent, they do, they do.
They've been like bought out by like large private equity firms, right?
Right.
Largely, so they're not the same kind of affordable housing.
I mean, we eventually, the city, I think, eventually stopped the ability to tear down anymore, but.
So we, we do, we do currently allow them, they're permitting, this is, we haven't had any recently, but we, in the mid-two thousands, it might have been two thousand and six or seven. We adopted a, uh, uh, manufactured home overlay park. Uh, closure.
Right.
Regulations in our code, which, which, um, have a significant number of. Uh, requirements for the owner to do to help the people move, which I think is probably. Um, led to the retention of the ones since we.
That are left. Hmm.
Well, hopefully these small ADUs and others, if we've been coming up with con, clusters, that'll kind of fill that need.
Hmm, hopefully.
Right, are we still in business?
We can move on, group.
Any other reports from commissioners?
Okay, um, no, my only thing was going to be to remind you, May twelfth, you have a meeting, that's the continued. Hearing for the waterway overlays on application, and then your next meeting will be canceled after that, it falls on Memorial Day holiday, so then. Wouldn't meet again until June, that's it for me, thanks.
Now we have some sign code.
Coming through.
Sign code.
Yeah, there's a couple items on that June.
That's exciting.
Uh, I don't have anything to report, Suzanne, uh, covered the, the city council meeting, the last city council meeting, so stay tuned on that. Hopefully we'll get that result.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing for me to see on May twelfth. You too, Jerry.
Second.
Okay.